Ladies and gentlemen, the Smithtown Planning Board is now in session.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. Please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-01 All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item two, number 2012-04 Storybook Homes. Item three, number 2012-02 Carlson Associates. Item four, number 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Item five, number 773 Scholar Estates. Item six, the 288 application of Olivia Estates. Part two, item seven, number 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Item eight, number 911A Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none of motion.
Motion to adjourn the matters that were just read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item nine, number 1141 Cahill Orchard. The applicant is requesting two retroactive six-month extensions of the conditional preliminary approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of filing for final approval. The map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, was granted preliminary approval by the Planning Board on September 21st, 2011. The Board granted the applicant a retroactive extension of the preliminary approval on May 16th, 2012, valid through September 21st, 2012. The applicant is requesting two six-month extensions in order to obtain more time to submit their application for final approval. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants two retroactive six-month extensions of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, from September 21st, 2012 to September 21st, 2013.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I'll submit the affidavit of posting to Frank Derubias. We request the extension. Actually, we are going to lessen the subdivision by one lot, so I think it's a good thing that you'll give us that time.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who wishes to talk on this application? Questions for the Board? Any questions? A motion for the extension of the preliminary approval of Cahill Orchard.
In the matter of the Map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three is item 10, Kleiman and McGowan. The applicants are requesting an amendment of lot lines for the properties located on the southwest corner of Shinnecock Court and Longhouse Way to transfer property from Suffolk County Tax Map number 43.3-1-8 to Suffolk County Tax Map number 43.3-1-9. The modification will transfer property from lot number eight to lot number nine. The land is owned R21CL, single-family residential, 10,000 square feet minimum. Both properties are irregular in shape and front on Longhouse Way and Shinnecock Court. The lot line amendment would transfer approximately 279 square feet from lot number eight to lot number nine. Presently, lot number eight is approximately 10,451 square feet, and lot number nine is approximately 13,785 square feet. After the proposed lot line amendment, lot number eight would be approximately 10,173 square feet, and lot number nine would be approximately 14,064 square feet. This proposal is consistent with the Town of Smithtown zoning ordinance in that both lots are part of a clustered subdivision that conforms to the size and shape of other lots in the area. Furthermore, the amendment of lot lines does not result in the creation of another lot. The applicants are requesting the amendment in order to create more conventional-shaped lots. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the proposed amendment of lot lines. The Planning Department has no objection to this request since a new buildable lot is not being created. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves an amendment of lot lines for the properties known as Suffolk County Tax Map number 43.3-1-8 and 43.3-1-9, so as to convey approximately 279 square feet from lot number eight to lot number nine by the survey prepared by Gary Benz, licensed surveyor, dated November 10th, 2012, subject to the following conditions: One, this amendment of lot lines shall be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Two, the applicant shall submit copies of all filed documents, including deeds with meets and bounds descriptions with date stamp and file numbers, to the Planning Department. Three, valid certificate of occupancies for both properties, including all structures, as depicted on the survey prepared by Gary Benz, licensed surveyor, dated November 10th, 2012, shall be submitted to the Planning Department.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
I represent both applicants.
Would you give your name and address?
My name is Ricardo Cervini, 229 Smithtown Boulevard, Nethconset, New York, 11767. C-E-R-V-I-N-I.
You have any questions there on what's going to be done?
No, Planning Department pretty much spelled it out.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Or any questions from the audience? Any questions from the Board? A motion to amend the lot lines for Kleiman and McGowan and Comett.
In the matter of the amendment of lot lines of Kleiman and McGowan, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 11, number 1070 Keystone Terrace. Mr. Chairman, this application came before the Planning Board at the December 19th, 2012 Planning Board hearing, at which time the Board conditionally waived sidewalks within the subdivision for Keystone Terrace, but did adjourn ruling a decision on the sidewalks on Route 111 due to the fact that the Planning Department was waiting for correspondence from New York State DOT to let us know if they were accepting of the idea of waiving the sidewalks or not. We did, in fact, get correspondence from them recently. I did add an update into the memorandum to inform the Board of what their decision was, and I will read that into the record. The Planning Department received correspondence from the New York State DOT regarding the applicant's request to waive the sidewalks along New York State Route 111. DOT informed planning that all required work in the state right-of-way has been completed, and the performance bond for that project has been returned to the applicant. Therefore, DOT has no objection to the applicant's request to waive the sidewalks. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Vincent DiCannio, doing business as DiCannio Management Corp., to waive the requirement for the installation of 300 linear feet of sidewalks along New York State Route 111 within the subdivision known as Keystone Terrace, number 1070.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've heard the recommendation of the Planning Department and have no objection.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this? Members of the Board, any question?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. We originally required it, now we're going to waive the requirement. Why did we originally think we needed to have the sidewalks?
Also, according to the regulations, sidewalks are required according to our subdivision regulations along all state and county roads.
A motion there on Keystone Terrace.
In the matter of Keystone Terrace, number 1070, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 12, number 1043 Yellowtop Farm Estates, Section 1. The applicant is requesting a refund of a payment in lieu of construction for sidewalks within the subdivision known as Yellowtop Farm Estates, number 1043, Section 1. The Planning Board approved the final map of Yellowtop Farm Estates in two sections. Section 1 was approved on February 19th, 2003, and Section 2 was approved on July 6th, 2005. The Section 1 performance bond required the applicant to install sidewalks on all Section 1 interior roads, Mount Pleasant Road, Placedit Avenue, and New York State Route 347. The applicant requested a waiver of the requirement to install sidewalks within Section 1, and the Planning Board granted the applicant a sidewalk waiver on October 6th, 2010. The waiver was for all interior sidewalks of the subdivision, not for sidewalks on Placedit Avenue, Mount Pleasant Road, or New York State Route 347. Subsequent to the waiver approval, the applicant requested a sidewalk waiver for the New York State Route 347 sidewalks. Planning contacted the New York State DOT requesting comments regarding the sidewalk waiver request. DOT responded in a letter dated February 14th, 2011, copies were attached to your memorandum, recommending the installation of temporary sidewalks along Route 347 as DOT was scheduled to commence construction along that portion of Route 347 beginning in the spring of 2015 as a continuation of their road improvement program for 347. Subsequently, the applicant contacted DOT requesting a waiver of the temporary sidewalks in lieu of a cash contribution. DOT responded in a letter dated April 12th, 2011, again, copy is attached, that cash in lieu of construction was acceptable. The amount of the contribution was calculated by the Engineering Department based on installation of temporary asphalt sidewalks in total $6,967. It should be noted that construction costs for concrete products, I'm sorry, for concrete sidewalks, would be in excess of $20,000 based on current cost for concrete products. The applicant submitted the payment in lieu of construction to the Planning Department on August 17th, 2012. The Town Board released the performance bond for Section 1 on October 25th, 2012. The applicant is requesting a refund of the cash payment in lieu of construction of the sidewalks because the New York State DOT waived the requirement to install the sidewalks and will construct sidewalks along that portion of New York State Route 347 when the road improvement program is extended to that area. The Planning Department recommends the Board make this subject of an onsite inspection.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. There's probably a long story to this, but I'll give you the short one. First of all, these are the affidavits for both cases. Long and the short of it is that Mr. DiCannio shouldn't have agreed to contribute the $6,900 and change to start with only because the state is actually building a wall, and whatever sidewalk requirements they have, they are going to do that, they being the state themselves. We also have, and I don't think there's any reason for an onsite here because the state has taken over the project, but on March 6th, 2013, Blase Denadio received the letter from Sheikh Zayed, who is the chief civil engineer, and basically the letter says that we had a request to waive the requirement of installing approximately 1,100 feet of sidewalk on Placedit Avenue, Mount Pleasant Road, and along Route 347. The DOT, it further states, will be installing the sidewalks along 347. To avoid duplication of work, we no longer require the installation of approximately 1,100 feet of sidewalk between Placedit and Mount Pleasant Road along Route 347. So however this got as far as it did, and Mr. DiCannio paid the $6,900 and change, it really shouldn't have been done only because the state has taken over the whole project. There is no reason to pay the town anything. He is putting in the sidewalks on Placedit and Mount Pleasant. So why there was this demand at the time, I guess because the Planning Department thought that he might have to put in asphalt temporary sidewalks and so forth, but it turns out that he doesn't have to do that. It's really my client's money, and only the Board has the power to order a return of the money. I'm going to give you a copy of the letter. I don't know if Blase put it in your file, the one I...
I think everybody has the copy there.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yes.
So, given the facts, I don't know that you have to do an onsite. There's probably nothing to see right now, but the state is saying they've taken control. Another issue, another fact is that part of what Mr. DiCannio agreed to through the Board in Yellowtop was allow the state an easement to park trucks and construction vehicles while they're doing the wall there, and that was done without compensation. So the state and he are fine with this situation.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Members of the Board, any questions?
I'd like to hear what Planning has to say in response to that presentation personally.
I'm not sure exactly what the question would be.
What's your response to, do you want to respond to any of that?
Well, in terms of what was presented, we've always maintained that this issue was a state issue, and it was not Planning that came up with this. It was the applicant working with the state of New York that came up with the issue of the asphalt sidewalks, and then later the cash contribution for the asphalt sidewalks. We did not propose any of this, so this was a state engendered issue. And at the time, the reason why the state did make that recommendation was because the funding for Section 2 of the 347 Improvement Program was in jeopardy at that time, and it was uncertain as to when that project would go forward. Subsequent to that, the state did obtain funding for Section 2, which is in front of the applicant's property, and I would assume that the state said, since they did have funding, they no longer need the temporary asphalt sidewalk.
Are you objecting to the applicant's request?
I'm deferring to the state.
Okay. Well, it looks like the state has no problem with it. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I don't see why we need to do an onsite inspection either. That's what I'm trying to understand here.
Well, it's standard practice when we get a waiver request, we put that in. If the Board wishes to rule on it, that's your decision.
I don't have a problem offering a resolution, depending on what...
It doesn't include there the sidewalks there on Placedit, correct? You're going to do the sidewalks on Placedit.
Yes.
And Mount Pleasant?
Yes.
Well, the Mount Pleasant ones, I think there, some of them are done. My only interest there is the paperwork. Is your client, what we've done in the past is where people wanted a waiver on things that they'd already committed to, what we've done there is tried to find a way there to put into the sidewalk fund for the Highway Department, which does repair works now only. And would your client be interested in making a contribution of that and waiver in light of the waiver?
If you're saying, does my client want to make a contribution to the Highway Fund? The answer is no. This has absolutely, it's a state road, and it's, the state is performing tremendous work, as we all know, if you drive past there, so...
Well, it wasn't original, the reason that I bring it up is there was an original thing to do asphalt sidewalks, and I don't really, I'm not really crazy about asphalt sidewalks, and I don't think they would apply very well in that area. But what we've been, what we've done there on other applications for waivers is to, for the paperwork that's got to be done to do this, to put it into place, is to ask if the applicant would be willing there to do a percentage contribution to the sidewalk fund for the town.
If you'll recall, Mr. Chairman, I think it was about a month ago, or maybe, probably three or four months ago, we had the same issue with another project of Mr. DiCannio's, and I think the Planning Department recommended a payment of a fee in lieu of the sidewalks, and we rejected that in this Board, said, "No, you don't have to pay the money because the sidewalks aren't being put in." It's an easy...
I agree. I agree that there's, that there's no sidewalks to be put in, and that there was not much sense in doing it to begin with. But what we have done, where things like that came up before, and more specifically on Edgewood Avenue, we got a contribution from the applicant to put into the sidewalk fund for the Highway Department, because there's two separate funds. One therefore doing it specifically, and one for doing the repair work, and they had agreed, that applicant had agreed to do a contribution in lieu of a waiver. And it was, it was very acceptable there to the applicant and to his attorney, and that's the only reason I bring it up.
Right. Well, Mr. G, it's not acceptable to my client, it's not acceptable to me. The money really should be given back to Mr. DiCannio. In these hard times, $6,900 is certainly better in my pocket than some ethereal highway fund to fix sidewalks.
Members of the Board, how do you feel?
Well, it seems to me that the requirement was made when it was thought that possibly temporary sidewalks would have to be built, and apparently that's not the case now because the state has taken over. So if the purpose for the money doesn't exist anymore, I think the money should go back to where it came from.
Okay. Everybody feel the same way?
I agree with Jim also.
A motion?
In the matter...
Motion to waive it and return the money.
In the matter of Yellowtop Farm Estates, Section 1, number 1043, motion to refund the cash payment paid of $6,967 in lieu of construction of the sidewalks along New York State Route 347.
All those, oh, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to waive anything now? Is that it?
That's it.
I think that's it.
No, he's going to do the sidewalks.
Is there anything, any other motion required? Is that, is that it? Okay. Okay.
Does the town, do they have to make a motion for the Town Board to release the funds?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three is item 13, the TDFR application for VIB real properties. Mr. Chairman, at this time, the applicant is not present for this application. I don't know how to proceed with that. The people who are transferring the density flow rights to the applicant are present, but the applicant is not present.
She's the, she's the one that's doing the transfer of the thing. Okay. Well, then why don't you read it there? By that time, maybe the applicant will be here.
Okay.
He said he was going to be here.
All righty. Pursuant to Section 323 of the Town Code, the applicant is proposing to transfer 2.25 density flow rights from Suffolk County Tax Map number 6-6-6 and 7, the sending parcel, to Suffolk County Tax Map number 55-5-6.2, the receiving parcel. The Planning Board issued a letter of interpretation on May 16th, 2012, determining there to be 22 density flow rights available to be transferred from the sending parcel, plus an additional right if the existing dwelling was removed. The proposed transfer would allow the applicant to maintain a 10,000-square-foot multi-use building on the receiving parcel. The proposed sending parcel is located on the north side of Sunken Metal Road, 637 feet south of Fort Solongo Road and Fort Solongo. The parcel consists of two tax lots in the R43 zoning district and has a total lot area of 27.63 acres. There is a single-family dwelling, as well as a swimming pool, greenhouse, detached garage, and two sheds on the property. The parcel has some steep slopes and is densely wooded. The sending parcel is identified on the Transfer of Density Flow Rights map as being within a sending district. The proposed receiving parcel is located on the east side of Lake Avenue and St. James, 197 feet south of Woodlawn Avenue. The site is split-zone, central business, and R10, single-family residential, 10,000 square feet minimum, and is located within a mapped receiving district. The site is developed with a 10,000-square-foot multi-use building that consists of three retail stores and two offices on the first floor, and eight apartments on the second floor. According to the calculations submitted by the applicant, the maximum allowable density load on the receiving parcel is 690 gallons per day, and the existing density load is 1,362 gallons per day. Transferring 2.25 density flow rights to this parcel would increase the maximum allowable density load to 1,365 gallons per day. The Planning Department has received the application for compliance, I'm sorry, has reviewed the application for compliance with Section 323 of the Town Code, and has found that the proposal meets all of the standards described in 323-10 for the transfer of density flow rights as listed below. One, the Planning Department has received notification from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services indicating that they have authorized the transfer of 2.25 density flow rights from the sending parcel to the receiving parcel. Two, the receiving parcel received site plan approval in 1986 and obtained a certificate of occupancy in 1991. Additionally, the transfer of rights will preserve 2.25 acres of environmentally sensitive land on the sending parcel. Therefore, the transfer is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the owner of the sending parcel has agreed to file a covenant that delineates and designates 2.25 acres of land as open space that shall remain as open space for the express purpose of protecting the aquifer and water supply, and shall be kept in its natural state in perpetuity, excepting only property maintenance activities as may be appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes without impairing the essential nature and open character of the premise. Once this covenant is submitted, it will be forwarded to the Town Attorney for his approval, and then will be filed with the deed to the sending parcel in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Four, based on the information submitted with the application, the maximum flow that would be permitted if no density flow rights were transferred is 690 gallons per day. The proposed transfer would allow a flow of 1,365 gallons per day, 15 gallons per day less than the double-density limitation. Based on the information presented in the Planning Advisory Memorandum dated September 11th, 2012, the Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board approve the transfer of 2.25 density flow rights from Suffolk County Map number 6-1-6 and 7 to 55-5-6.2, and offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself as... Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is listed as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECRE negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, NEIS, is not necessary, in the matter of TDFR-PR number 2, VIP real properties, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not involve the destruction of, or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B, the receiving parcel does not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes, which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject parcel. C, an adverse impact upon groundwater is not anticipated, as this project will be subject to Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article 12, which regulates the storage and handling of toxic and hazardous materials, and Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article 6, restricting the discharge of waste to sanitary and non-contact cooling water, and further limiting the volume of such discharges. In addition, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services has no objection to the proposed transfer of density flow rights to the receiving parcel. D, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. And F, the receiving parcel is currently developed and was previously subject to site plan review and approval. The proposed transfer of density flow rights does not involve any further development of the receiving parcel. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the transfer of 2.25 density flow rights from Suffolk County Tax Map Number 6-1-6 and 7 to 55-5-6.2, and authorizes the issuance of a TDFR certificate upon the Planning Department's receipt of a copy of the filed covenant.
Thank you. Anybody representing the applicant? Mr. DeCanyio? I mean, Mr.?
If we...
Well, what we need there is, you're the applicant there for the rights, and she's the one that's giving the rights there to you. What I need to know there is where the maps, we didn't get the maps from the Planning Department, and so I just want to know if you, if the thing was done and the maps were prepared.
My name is Vincent Purell, I'm the receiving person for the TDRs, and I spoke with the attorney this evening, and that was the attorney for the, for the TDRs transferring over to me, and I'm under the impression that they were, that the preliminary map was submitted to the Planning Department along with the cutout, and that the official maps will be, you know, worked out after the meeting. That's, that's what I'm told.
Do you receive the maps there for, for the, what we have is, and that's a reason that I want to ask the question, is we have 20-some-odd acres up in there, and we want to keep track of these, of these TDRs as they are being distributed, so that we know when the covenants are filed and so forth, and there's no, there's no crossover. And so that's what, that's what we want there, all we've had in the past.
Mr. Chairman, I'm under the impression that the Planning Department has everything necessary for, for the transfer to occur and for you to approve tonight. Like I said, I was on the phone this evening making sure, and Allison assured me that everything was, was ready to go.
Well, we got your map, where it's going to go, but we didn't get the map from where it's coming.
About a month ago, this board did a lot line amendment, if you recall, and that lot line amendment, we shifted that over to cover the, what we said was the land to be transferred. So you did the lot line amendment?
We did all of the transfer of the lot lines, so that we had identification...
Right, in lot number...
But we didn't get the, you haven't got the specifics, and that's what I think should be entered.
The, I have the lot, let me see if I can find it here. This, what you approved is what's being transferred.
The 2.25 acres was approved?
Yes, that's, that was in the transfer that you were working with. Hold on. You want to bring this up? Sure. That's the, if you recall, that's the, what Blaze is bringing you is the overall map.
I know we did an overall map, but I don't know if we did one specific, the 2.25 acres.
I'll give you a quick explanation, so everybody understands. This is the map that was approved by the board, by the two rights, plus the additional if the existing house is removed.
Yeah, maybe you should get the microphone.
Oh. Should I go over that again?
Yeah, why don't you start, start it over.
This map represents what the board approved for the 22 density flow rights, plus the additional one if the existing house were removed. When the applicant and the sender of the, the sending parcel made the application to do the transfer of the 2.25 rights, they submitted a smaller map, which is identical to this, showing that they were going to preserve two separate areas on the property totaling 2.25 acres, or 2.25 rights. We suggested to them when we received it, that instead of breaking it up into two separate areas like this, that they combine it into one area and preserve it as one parcel. Right now, the people of the sending parcel is working on revising this map to show us one piece of property that represents 2.25 acres, and they'll submit it to us when they have it done.
Okay. Everybody in the board understand that?
Mm-hmm.
What they're going to do? Because that's what we need to do to keep up to date with this.
Right.
It should be in our package, which ones you're going to do.
Right.
All right?
Blaze, where are the 2.25 acres that are being sanitized?
Represented on this map, which is what was submitted, is roughly 40,000 feet here and 53,000 feet here, square feet, which comes to 2.25 acres or 2.25 rights. And what we recommend is that instead of breaking it up into two separate parcels, do it as one parcel in one location on the property.
You're going to pick out, you're going to pick out one 2.25 parcel?
Right, right.
Okay, would you get those maps to the board?
Yes.
When you've, when you've got it, and then we can handle it there without delaying any application. Any objections to that? On the board?
No.
No? Okay.
Blaze, do you not know where the 2.25 are now, though?
At this time, we're not sure where they will actually denote where the entire parcel will be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, all we want to do there is just keep track, and that's the reason that a big parcel like this, we want to keep track of how they go, that we, that we've got, that we know what's being done, okay?
Okay.
Because the, if the neighbors or someone like that wants to know what we're doing, they know what we're doing.
Right.
Okay?
Alrighty. Do you want me to take that back?
Okay.
Okay.
Now, would you, would you be kind enough to come up and give your name and address, please, so that we just have it for the record? This is something new for us there, it's only a little over a year or so old, this procedure.
My name is Maya Ryan. My address is 99 Sunken Meadow Road, Northport, New York, 11768.
Okay, you understand what we're going to do? They're going to, they're going to work with you with a map to make an adjustment from what you originally wanted to do to what you want finally going to do, and they're going to give us back the map.
Yes, I do.
Okay? Okay.
Right here.
All right. Members of the board, a motion on density flow rights for TDFR-PR2, or PR2.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, Frank, do we need a motion on the SECRE?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got to do two things first. We've got to do, first, a SECRE negative, a motion for the SECRE negative.
In the matter of TDFR-PR-2, VIP Real Properties, motion to approve the SECRE negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. And a motion there for the density flow rights of 2.25 acres with the map to be enclosed to us.
In the matter of TDFR-PR-2, VIP Real Properties, motion to adopt the resolution as recommended by the Planning Department, and issue a TDFR certificate upon the Planning Department's receipt of a copy of the filed covenant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Okay.
We thank you. Okay? All right.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda would be the adoption of minutes for the February 20th, 2013 Planning Board Meeting.
Adoption of the minutes of February the 20th, 2013. I move that we adopt the minutes of February 23rd? February 20th, I'm sorry, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, any other questions? Nothing? A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?